That uh we uh contract they would accept and leveled off and made that.
And then while I mean they told me that's in the ladies that lived in this old Victorian house, that's that amount in that field.
Morning, everybody. It's nine o'clock. Uh we are here. Uh my name's Dale Barney Town Moderator. Um for those of you that don't know, Canaan is a Senate Bill Two town, so that means we have two sessions to decide on things. And today's the first session is a deliberative session. It's a session that can be talked about, debated. Um and potentially amended or modified um depending on what it is. And so um we're gonna kind of do this just like the regular uh our regular town meeting that we have, except this is gonna be obviously a shortened version. And I'm hoping to get out of here in an hour or so.
Yeah.
So please, there's there's several of us that uh that have to go to a funeral at eleven o'clock here in town. So um so please make your remarks to the point and short if you can. And um it will will everybody has a right to speak, obviously, and so we're gonna accommodate that. And uh hopefully we can get through this in a quick manner. Uh one way or another, some type of a Warren article is gonna be on the ballot in a month. Uh from I think it's a month from today, isn't that?
Yes.
September twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Um it's gonna be from uh what did we say? One o'clock?
One to six.
One to six on September twenty-fourth. Okay, uh in here, in this building, um in this room. So one to six on September twenty-fourth, some semblance of an article is gonna be voted on. Alright, so let's get right to it. Look, I'm just gonna read the article and then we can open it up for discussion, okay? Um so on the last page of your handout is the proposed article um. Um to see if the to see if the town will vote to raise one. Uh will vote to one, to raise and appropriate two million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars gross budget for the purpose of financing a water system improvements, the project. And two, to authorize the issuance of not more than six hundred and ninety thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Financing Act RSA thirty-three to fund costs of the project and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the term of borrowing. And three, to authorize the town officials to apply for, obtain, accept, expend federal um congressional directed spending, state or other aid or grant monies or the state revolving funds principal forgiveness in respect to the project. And to use such monies to finance the project, reduce the amount of bonds or notes issued for the project, to prepay such bonds or notes, to pay debt service on such bonds or notes. And four, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to take any other actions or to pass any other motion. Do I have a motion to accept this for discussion? Mike, thanks. And then a second, Scott? Alright, it's open for discussion and um I assume somebody from the town maybe is gonna go first and make a presentation of what's uh happening here.
Yeah, basically what we've done is created a um uh a little PowerPoint, just going over some of the basics. Um so basically, what's the purpose of the project? It was to improve water quality. Uh improvements to the intake system, which have already been completed in Canaan Lake. Um and then we also have to realign the distribution center to feed the tank first and distribute the water to the residents instead of backfeeding the tank, which is how it's set up right now. Right now, the water comes from Canaan Street Lake, goes down into the distribution center. And through pressure backfilling, backfills the tank. The issue is because when you don't have a loss of pressure for a period of time, you're you're holding water in the tank that's not moving. Um so we do get stagnant water. We do get uh some testing issues. So.
System now.
Well.
Right.
You're you're echoing. So um basically, the water now is gonna go from the intake system in the lake to the tank and be distributed through the town at that point. And the third part of the uh water quality improvement is the removal of the lead that exists uh correct me if I'm wrong, John, thirty-six residences, I think it is, um that have lead, act lead in the pipe and the feeds to the those residences. So that's all part of this this program. Um basically, we took some excerpts from the the petition to the town meeting, um and the first one talks about the six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh this article was presented to the court in the in June. Um and we had a six hundred and ninety thousand dollar estimated uh town match of which some of it was gonna be paid with town funds and some of it was gonna be borrowing, but this is a not to exceed worst case scenario item. Um and then we've had a couple of subsequent changes from the state and how we're funding this, so we'll go into that in a minute. Um and the second item goes into describing where it's actually taking place. And the third is just the overall project cost. So when we look at uh we had to go to the state in order to have this special town meeting. Um and the reason for that was because we were unable to get all of the meet all of the deadlines. Like we had a a chart done starting in May for when we had to submit to the court and all of the meetings we had to have to get there. So starting in May, we had to in order to make the end of September, it was gonna be like four and a half to five months, and we didn't have that lead time prior to the to the March vote. So we had to have a special town meeting um to make this process work because on September thirtieth is when we have the expiration date from for the water funding program. So we have to be accepted it prior to that date. So basically, we have three funding sources. Well, two and a half funding sources. Um one is the uh State Revolving Fund, which is the the basically a loan program that the state has has always had for for systems like this. The goal is that you you borrow the money, you use it for your infrastructure project. As you pay back the debt, the money goes back into a fund that gets reused to borrow, to be lent to other towns and municipalities. So in this case, uh we were awarded seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. This is for the lead uh the letter remediation. And in the beginning, we had a match of, I think it was uh someone say seventy-five, twenty-five when we first started. Uh which is why we had a little bigger number to match then. And then it went to uh a week of a week ago Wednesday, we look up, we were gonna get a hundred percent forgiveness in, which is why the the one piece of paper has, when you look at the Warren article, the item in red, State Revolving Fund Principal Forgiveness, that came from the state requesting that words be added because it's actually not a grant. It's forgiveness of loan. Um so when we get to seven hundred and eighty thousand, we are being granted a loan, but they're forgiving seventy-one percent of that. Um and there still is the potential because all the the stimulus money funds have to be expended by the state by twenty-six, so no one else is using it. They can forgive a hundred percent, which is what they thought they were gonna do a week ago, and then they backed off of that this week. But these numbers are only current as of Wednesday. So this is where we are. Uh so we will have to borrow no additional funds. We have a two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar portion of that SRF loan that the town will be responsible for at about one or two percent. But that's just the nature of having that that funding source. The other funding source is the EPA. Uh that was the one point four five seven million, um and that is a grant. And we have a three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar match on that. And the item that just came up in the last week as as well is the fact that now because it's part of the same project and extension of the project, the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar SRF loan that we had a couple of years ago that did the water intake system now is allowed to count towards our match. So the town does not have to come up with a separate three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar uh bond to match that. So the funds that we've already borrowed from SRF cover that match. So basically, when you look at the end of this project, we will have a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar SRF loan and two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollar SRF loan that we have to pay back, and the balance of that from the seven eighty is being forgiven. So there's not, we will actually not have to find a a funding source for these funds because those are already uh approved at this point. We'll not be going to or bonding, but we still will have a borrowing attachment, which is why we have the matching funds uh which included both matches, but now we only have to come up with one. Uh but the fact that the that this Warren article was created as part of a petition to the court, and this is what was presented. We do not want to be changing the the numbers at this point. We're gonna leave the numbers there. They're not to exceeds, but at this point, we are not gonna be having to seek any additional funding for the project. So uh the next yeah, the next slide was the one just talking about the um the the price, the the actual estimate, which was prepared by Horizons Engineering and Mike Duffy from Horizons is here, if you have any questions regarding the cost and what's included. Uh but there are the four segments of this project, which is the intake at the lake to the plant, the water main plant to the tank. The water main replacement on Church Street Route Four from School Street to Depot, and then the lead service lines, which is on Church Street as well. So those are the four segments of the project. Um the current budget for that is two point eight million. Um so as I said, these numbers have been changing by the day almost, and we're, this is, you're getting actual today numbers um versus what we had a couple of months ago, which was put into the Warren article. So we are we are recommending that the town uh approve this project because without it, we lose the funds after September thirtieth, and we still are gonna have to do these projects, but given that we don't have to find any additional funds and we are paying back, and then the the users on the system will be paying back the SRF loans, which is uh the operational cost. The town will have to come up with no additional financing. So on the funding sources, the WSRF grant funding of seven hundred and eighty thousand is a very interest low interest loan that they're forgiving five hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars, and the town will maintain the two hundred and twenty-six thousand two two hundred dollars. And the CDS funding of one point seven four seven million is a grant with a match of three sixty-seven that we no longer have to come up with additional funding because funding we already have will match it. Uh there is no ARCA funds will be needed for the project. I know ARCA funds were put into, and I'm gonna say incorrectly put into the water fund. The problem was that it was doing two things. One artificially keeping the fund looking like it was healthier than it is. Secondly, um in talking to the attorney, it does have to be put on as a ballot article before it's moved to an enterprise fund because it's town general fund money being moved to an enterprise fund and has to be has to be uh approved by the voters. Uh and then the Horizons Engineering also provided estimates for the booster station and Orange River Crossing, which are not included in this project. And they total two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. These projects could be covered with ARCA funds that we have uh if they were put on the ballot and approved by the voters of the town. Uh and in conclusion, the town will require only the the two hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred dollars in additional debt, which is already part of the seven hundred and eighty thousand. And we're working now to finalize the rate changes based on what's happened because the rate changes were significantly higher than they will be um going forward because we no longer have to borrow that other four or five hundred thousand dollars. So uh in all in all, very good news over the last couple of weeks, and right now, we just moved to the voter saying, do we want to accept these two grants uh with the terms that have been stated?
Alright, anybody else? Next. Any comments, questions, concerns? Yes.
Hi darling, um just my own information. It says there's a water tank on Burnwood Farms Room?
It's um no, she's right.
Okay.
That's right up your back, neighbor. We know where you live.
Wonder if we had two tanks or?
Oh no, I'll go down once. We're not Vermont.
That so people know where the tank is.
Yeah, it's on Chief's front.
Point of clarity, yeah. And I'm assuming the um the lead pipes are on Hill Court?
No, actually, the lead pipes um are on Church Street. That's the old part of the main. When they redid the whole town, they left that section from Depot Street at the end of School Street. And they that's the old section. It goes to Maskama Bank and then the Methodist Church and the our Curtis. Not Curtis, but uh Evans Store. That whole area right there has the one hundred and thirty-five degree pipe.
Oh wow.
So the the problem is that I bet you the hole inside of that is about that big. And the pipe itself is about eight inches. You know, you can imagine what's inside.
Yep.
And when I flush, I have to flush that for almost two to three hours. I go back and forth. I go with Tucker's in front of Tucker's is a hydrant.
Mm-hmm.
And then right in front of the library is the other hydrant. So I go back and forth to get all the the mess out of it. I mean, the pipe is so old. And that's the problem. The original pipes, ninety percent of the town was replaced back in when in eighty-nine, ninety. And they never, there's Island Avenue and that section right there, they never did any work on. And problematic with the water quality in the town.
We can work on this section from Liz down to the bottom of the hill even.
From.
I know.
Oh no, that's exactly. No, that's that's what we're replacing. Yeah, that whole section from in front of your house all the way down onto Bruce. That's that'll that'll be that that'll be taken out. That's that's that and it's low pressure area there. So we're in most places where the the sediment is round in your section because of low pressure, it's right in the bottom of the bike. So I mean, if you if you actually cut cut the bike, you'll go about that much material at the bottom of the bike. And you open the top of the bike, it's open. Because like that, like um it was a thousand, I think the pressure is eleven PSI. Down towards you, it's maybe at best fifteen. And then as you get on the hill, it gets it gets a little higher, but that doesn't get.
Lucky to have pressure.
Oh, I know. No, that's why we're here. You can actually put the booster station in so that you will have up to seventy-five to eighty PSI in the house. You won't know what to do.
Okay, next. Yeah, go ahead.
What's the timeframe to get all this stuff?
Um next, next spring, if we pass this now, and Mike's being a good boy, gets all the work done. It'll go out the bit in December, January. It'll be started next spring, and that'll be from Burnwood Farms down the hill and then across on Blaine Road, right across the street from Labrador, all the way out to the tank. That's where we're gonna go. And so then we'll directly feed the tank and keep the water in the tank moving. The problem I have now is like what Chad said is that the water comes out through town. The only time it gets to the tank is at night. Water gets fed through the town. And when everybody stops using it at eleven o'clock at night, the end of Monday Night Football, then the water goes up into the tank. And you can see, literally see it on the chart. So and the problem with the tank is tank feeds this side of town. Everybody on that side of town gets the water directly from the plant. On this side of town, they get it from the tank because it feeds down in front of your house, comes out across the hill, and then goes out that way. So everybody on this side of town gets the the tank water, which we measured, I'm gonna say about a year and a half ago, eighteen days old. Where you really want water to be less than five days old. That's the that's the issue that I have.
Next. Mike, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Um and I'd like to start by thanking the town for giving me the information in such a timely manner that I asked for. I do appreciate it. I got it. Got it. Like within eighteen hours or something, so it's really great. Uh so I wanna start off first, and this is personal comment. Uh I'm on the Budget Committee. I have talked to individual Budget Committee members uh individually. People. But um I wanna start off by saying, first of all, I've been involved with this project since two thousand nineteen. And things have changed over and over and over and over and over during the period of time, the last five years. Um some people have been, are still involved. Steve Fries was involved back in two thousand twenty-one. Uh and uh and other people have left. First comment I have is I strongly support this Warner. Strongly support the Warner. In a document I saw uh from Chad's office saying, well, we probably really need six, seven hundred and eighty thousand. I think that's accurate. I think they need the seven hundred and eighty thousand. As a matter of fact, I did it entirely independently, and I came up with seven hundred and eighty thousand. So it's data. Okay, if somebody, I don't know if it causes problems to amend that to seven hundred and eighty, but if it doesn't, I would say amend it to seven eighty. Okay, so now I start to diverge after the next couple of comments. So the first comment is strongly support the Warner. Second, I really do think it needs to be seven eighty, which duck, it backs up what communication was internal in the town. The third one is um I want the voters to understand that you're not just borrowing six hundred and ninety or seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. You've already borrowed five hundred and fifty thousand. So the total obligations in terms of borrowing would be one point three million. I still support. And I'm not exactly notorious for spending money lavishly or foolishly. I still support the total appropriation of one point three million, which sounds like a hellacious amount of money. And it is a hellacious amount of money, but there's a couple of reasons why. I still support it. One is you need it. The second is, one of those lines in the Warren article says loan forgiveness was added at one of the last hearings. Doing it the way it's proposed by the town, which I think is great. It will get not just the five hundred and forty-five thousand dollar forgiveness, but another twenty-five thousand dollar forgiveness on the five hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan. So you're gonna get a total of five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars back. As long as that money comes back and is applied against those loans, those people that live, the rate payers that live in the village are protected. It's good. So it really needs to have that loan forgiveness component in it in order for it to work. So if you do that, it drops that whole volatiliously big one point three million in loans down by almost six hundred thousand. See, now you're down around seven hundred thousand bucks. As far back as nineteen, as two thousand twenty, we thought it was gonna cost six hundred thousand bucks in loans. Okay, still sounds like a hellacious amount of money for two hundred users. So the other thing you need to know is the current loan of five fifty has an interest rate of one point six five roughly. One point six five percent. We put in in a prior budget, I don't know if it's in there anymore or not, but in a prior budget, we put in thirty thousand dollars to cover debt service. So it covered all of that debt service. And you can go talk to a banker, talk to a lender and see what what's the what's the payment gonna be on five hundred thousand or seven hundred thousand dollars, and it'll give you an idea. And it's even the worst case scenario, it's about fifty thousand a year for debt service. We had thirty-five thousand in for debt service at one point, so it's not outrageous. The second tranche of money that you're borrowing, I think looks like something around two point five to two point six percentages. Still dirt cheap compared to what the prime is and all the rest. It's cheap money. When I said fifty thousand, that includes the interest on that money. But assume it's gonna be roughly seven hundred thousand out of a million three. So kudos to Warren Article. It's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to borrow that one point three million, even though this authorization only calls for either the six ninety or the seven eighty. And the reason it's only that amount is because there was an authorization back in twenty-one, March, for the five hundred fifty thousand dollars. And it passed. The other neat feature about this, not so neat if you're trying to actually make it happen, you gotta have a sixty percent vote in favor. So when this was voted on in twenty-one, the vote in favor was eighty-one percent of town voters. You need to do that again. So everybody in the world that can needs to support this. The seven hundred thousand will take a system that's over a hundred years old and make it a new system. Not new new, but one at least is in the twenty-first century. So it's the right thing to do. So I talked about the sixty percent um um. I talked about the five hundred and fifty thousand you already had. I talked about the loan forgiveness. I talked about the interest rates. Um there may be some positives. You know, I'll know until you get into it. And I I know we've had other numbers in the past, and these numbers look a little high. I I don't question that. I it's up to you guys. Alright, so the only other comment I'll make is not for today, but it is relevant to this Warren Article. And that is, in two thousand twenty-one, we're trying to figure out how to balance this budget. How we're gonna do this project. Different Board of Selectmen at the time. Although some of the same. And those people who were there, uh Dan Collins was on the board at that time uh uh. And I'm trying to think. Scott Porter was on the board, yeah. So at that time, I was directed to apply for congressionally directed spending the million four. And we got the million four. Just so long as you're, I'm only saying this for information purposes. We can talk about it next month at some other time, but not today. In that application, which we put in on May twenty-first, the board voted, board didn't know about this local money until after town meeting. It was unexpected. We did not know it was coming. The state didn't know it was coming. State knew it was coming in uh April, May. And sent us out a notice saying that in June, they sent us out a note saying this money is available. We did not know that that money was available until May. On May eighteenth, I adjusted the congressionally directed spending application to specifically include ARCA money in it. If and when we got it. That was approved by the board after meeting on it, hearing on the application. It was approved up by the board as unanticipated funding. It went into the budget that went into the federal government as unanticipated funding. At that time, it was three hundred and ninety thousand because we wasn't, weren't sure exactly how much was coming in. We got in in August, uh we got a revised sheet that said that the amount we were gonna get was four hundred and eight thousand dollars. The first tranche came in in um August, September uh twenty-one. It was two hundred and four thousand um uh forty-five thousand went to other projects that were immediate right then that the board applied it to. The other hundred and fifty-five thousand, I think it's supposed to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, went into the water and sewer count. And that was an appropriate place for it to go because it was unanticipated funds. It does not need an independent author. I know you and I disagree. I wanna talk to your lawyer. Uh you can take your head now. I've been here for fourteen years doing this crap. I know that the law says you can do that without going back to the books. We can talk about it later. So a hundred and sixty thousand went into the water and sewer company. The towns knew it went in there and and indicated that on the audit reports. Uh the second tranche of money came in after I left on November third. And it was for three hundred and eight thousand dollars. And again, after talking to it with the auditors, it went into a dedicated account. Uh since then, whatever happened in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, I don't know. And I'm not sure I I particularly care other than I'm pointing out that there was a series of votes that were entirely legal to take unanticipated funds and put them into the project. Why? Because of all the emergency situations we had in the town of Canaan. There were costly emergency situations. The most pressing emergency situation in the town of Canaan was a water system was collapsing every single day and year with part of the main breaking down. And as all of you who live in the village know, that the water system went down for days on end while we tried to find breaks and launch. It was a crisis. That's where the money went, was the most immediate crisis. It was a crisis that had the lowest tax base supporting it, meaning two hundred users, and that's why the money went in. We can talk about that. But and again, just to summarize enough, shut up. I support this bond. I think you need to do it. I support a total indebtedness, including the original five fifty of a million three. I think you need to do it. If if the town can tell me whether it's legal to make an amendment to change the number to seven eighty, I would change the number to seven eighty by motion. I want the people to understand it's a million three in borrowing. I want the people to understand that there's up to five hundred and seventy-one thousand that can be forgiven on that, and my understanding is the state say you play by these rules, we'll forgive it. So there's nothing in here that will stop it from being forgiven, which would drop that total indebtedness down by five hundred and seventy thousand dollars and gets you down to a very manageable amount of debt at a very low interest rate over, I think, twenty years. Is that what?
Twenty thirty, depending on what you bought.
Whatever, either twenty or thirty years. The long and short of it is in the budget, if you have fifty thousand going in. In the budget, if you have fifty thousand going into debt service, it's affordable by the rate payers. When the budget committee met, I, I, I and a bunch of other people. Uh, were concerned about. Um, what do we do to the rate payers in the village? And we were also concerned because we're trying to get more rate payers into the village. Since we only got a third of our capacity being used. So we got more businesses and more homes in the village. The rates will get down because the variable cost of adding. Another two hundred users is squat. So you make, you could easily raise another two hundred thousand dollars just by using another third of your capacity. So that is a major thrust of. The town opal is here, but it's a major thrust of the economic development, development committee. Is to build out the village some more, so we have more rate payers to cover those costs. Bless it. Agree with everything you're doing. I don't agree with you on, on the ARPA money. You may need that ARPA money before you're done. Because I'm not sure you've covered the four hundred thousand down in the last tier, which is the two river, three river crossings. And the booster station. The booster station I'm sure is covered. But I'm not so sure about that.
It's two hundred and twenty thousand for those two. The sewer one is what bring it up over four hundred.
I, I didn't say in your discussion in your paper, I didn't say, are you still doing a river crossing not from Williamsfield or the river?
It depends. Well, it depends on the river level. We worked in the river before. And if, if this year because it's so wet, I can't get down in there and the state won't let us down.
You've already drilled though, right?
Yeah, no, we haven't drilled over there, no.
What did you do under the river last year?
Uh, I haven't done anything. We didn't go into the river. Because the water was too high.
They went to it.
Yeah, we went to it to the edge on both sides. So if, if we get the opportunity, we can save that seventy or eighty thousand dollars. By getting it under. We worked on it before.
Okay, I know I already have gone way too long. So the only comment I make on that is. You've had four breaks in that line in the last ten years, under that river.
Oh, yeah.
If there was ever a place where you needed to bore. I don't care if you started over here. You need to go under that river because you're gonna keep digging it up. In the past, some people may have actually dug it up like permits. It's, that ought to be addressed. Okay, that's it. Thank you for the opportunity to say.
Go ahead.
I just wanna, and this is actually a, a question, not a comment. Um, because I agree that. We have the ability to change the. The warrant article to seven hundred eighty thousand. That's the right number. To be in there and it's actually what the state has asked for. Um, so my question is, when the, when the budget committee. Or the, when the. Deliberative session and the, and the public votes for an amendment to a warrant article. I'm wondering if we were able to say. We recommend changing the amount. Of maximum borrowing to seven hundred and eighty thousand. With the condition that. We don't in some way violate the court order. And we get that checked by our attorney before we change it. So it becomes a condition change. That's my question. Because I, I think the seven eighty is the correct number. We would like to change it and, and all things being equal, I just don't know if it's gonna cause us any. Aggravation. And, and that's what we have to like is. They, our attorney, uh, they did this, which, uh. Stephen Whitley, our bond counsel said. You know, we really don't wanna change hardly anything in this because that's the court approved that particular warrant. So I'd like the. I don't know how to get an option to change it. I guess that's what it is like to, to be able to check while we.
I don't know because they have to be done today.
Well, and that's, and that's the question, so.
Would you go back to the court and amend that?
I would. Well, that's my question. I, I would wanna talk to Stephen Whitley and just make sure, like, do we have to amend it to them? I don't know the answer to that.
My guess is the court would wanna approve the number, but.
Yeah, I don't know that either. And that's, that's my only potential glitch because if we change it to seven eighty, they say that's no good. We're dead in the water. So if we were gonna say we're not sure, I would stick with the six ninety so that we can get this through so we don't lose the money because we're not really gonna have an issue with that.
But so the only I do know. In the past, I was dealing with it. To change that number does not change the intent of the article. So that it does.
But this was actually in the court order.
But that's what I'm saying. If it's in the court order, I don't, that's why I say I don't know what the legal.
Yeah, that's, that's just my concern. I just don't wanna leave here. In the wind.
Just follow up question. If you got, you got a bunch of stakeholders, it's the rate payers, it's the selectmen, there's the court, there's the, the D S. What happens if D S says you're gonna have the seven eighty?
They actually, on Wednesday, they, they commented that's what they were hoping we could do, but they were okay if we didn't. We said we get a lesson.
How do we do this? If we did up to seven eighty. That wouldn't offend the court. The court could come back and say, okay, that's what you said up to seven eighty, but we're telling you in our order, six nine. So you're already having out. I think the language does say up to.
Yeah, it does say up to.
So.
Or not more than.
Not more than the same thing.
It's just, it's just that we're amending a court order.
So a court could easily, if a court is ticked off or wants to do something stupid. Then they could say, we sold you six nine. That's fine. If the reaction to the court is, that's correct, your honor. So what we'll do is, we will not exceed the number of six nine. We're gonna date as seven eight. I. You can't, you need to get the legal opinion today. You're not gonna get a lawyer today. You're not gonna get a judge today. No. You need the seven eighty.
Like. Could, could you, um, I mean, and I get, I just, I'm ignorant as far as deadlines and things like this. Is that, that delta, could you raise it in a warrant article next year and apply it?
Exactly.
And that's what the state suggested. If we don't change it. Now, John did add four or five additional services into here from our estimates when we did our estimates. So you might need more than the seven eighty because I don't know, they, they were like twelve thousand each we budgeted or so. So. But this money, this program's gonna be there. So if, if we bid this out and we find out, well, we need another hundred fifty thousand or whatever it might be. You could, you could always apply for that money in the future.
And the next spring it comes out, June, spring.
So we could do that without, up, without going right into foul of a court order. This, this would guarantee that we get the seven eighty or the six ninety locked to us and then we can amend that afterwards. Right now, we just risk losing it.
You would not be popular with at least two hundred people if the state turns around and says. No, we closed your seven eight, so we're gonna give you.
Oh, no, they, they agreed if we could go with a lower number.
You all agree that they've agreed that.
Yeah, they, yeah, they go with a lower number.
I'm happy with those.
Yeah, so that we go with a low number.
Because I don't, I don't wanna run afoul of.
I have one.
All right, any other? Go ahead.
Um, you. Uh, the, the math was done here based on the, the, um, projects for estimates, right? So, uh, just I guess, what happens if, uh. Uh, the bid comes in for the intake. To the plan, not three forty-three, but five hundred thousand.
No, we've already done that portion of it.
Oh.
But then that's a good question, whether it's the intake piece or these other pieces. So we do have contingency built in. Oh, no, 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 no. We haven't approached any contractors yet. But we will typically at this stage keep like fifteen percent or so as contingency. But you know, the pricing has been in the last two years, pricing has been crazy to. Estimate, you know.
Well, that, that Goose Pond Dam was estimated at four point five. The lowest bid came in at six million dollars. Yeah. It was, it would save money, but you know, that's, that's why I'm asking.
Absolutely. Um, it's always a concern, especially when you do an estimate that's three years before you actually do the construction, you know, it can take. But, uh, we, we have contingency and then we also, you know, as part of what we try to do is make sure we're. As we're getting closer to the final product, we can evaluate and see how we're looking with the budget.
So do the improvements, are the grants flexible or not?
Oh, no, the grants are fixed. So it's right now, the earmark that we got from B P A is. One point four seven. You can have, go back and have the more. They don't like it when you go back.
Even if the bid comes in one point nine.
Exactly. Now, what I would say is that we've had, especially right after COVID. We had a number of projects that the pricing came in much, much higher, you know, twenty-five, thirty percent higher. There is a program called the Trust Fund. In New Hampshire.
Yeah.
And they've been very, very good at. Supplementing, you know, you need another ten percent. We'll help you out here and those are, that's grant funding. As long as they see that you've got your skin in the game, they've been very good at helping. Get over the hump for some of these projects that we've done. And we would do that. We would look for more money if we. We saw we needed it.
Mike.
Uh, and to back up, Mike Duffy. If you look at phase one, it was like five hundred and change is what it was budgeted for. It's completed at three forty-five. Okay, so. Michael's been. Pretty good at building a big enough number, so it seems to work okay. And he's made adjustments along the way to keep the costs down. At one point, we did not have enough money, period. Now, it's before we got this congressionally directed spending application and didn't get a grant money. And the next thing you can do is you can cut components out if you have to. So the only things you would cut out is the things you don't. Desperately need, obviously, and that's about balancing it. Uh, and, but everything is in here at this point that I'm aware of that was ever talked about, unless you've got new things that come up.
Thanks, thank you.
Next, yeah, go ahead.
Mike, you mentioned that, um, sixty percent of the voters need to approve this vote. Yes. Is it sixty percent of registered voters or sixty percent of voters of that day?
I, I, I don't remember it exactly, but I think it's sixty percent of the voters that show up.
Okay, that would make sense.
Yes, that's, that's.
If you recall, somebody voted, showed up.
Yeah, yeah, you'll never get that.
It has to be a sixty percent majority of the vote.
Tom.
Um. And I, I don't think there is an answer to this. I've had a lot of communication. But my understanding is, um, we're gonna be voting here.
Yes.
Not at the firehouse. And the polling will be different. Polling hours will be different. The one to six, which I think is gonna create a concern for some working folks. Um, but. I understand there's, you know, it is what it is. What I would highly recommend. Is that there be substantial communication and repetitive communications reminding people. It's here, it's one to six, it's not the usual. Um, otherwise, you know, people may get frustrated and they take. You know, quick time off from work, head to the firehouse. Nobody's there. And, and they, they don't bother. So. Um, I'm pretty sure it's sixty percent of.
It's just a matter of timing.
Or the day I'll show up.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So just so you know, we thought we will have the police and we'll have, uh, highway put signs at the door. So that people will understand who cares, you know, mark this spot here. Um, typically a special election like this, we usually had. A meeting and we voted right at the end of the meeting. So this is very different to actually have five hours to vote on a special. I got a little pushback about, well, that's way too long. So we're trying to find a happy medium, you know. Everyone works. First, the internship can come by before they go to work. First, definitely, on that. So we just hoping for.
I think one to six, it's, you know, it's kind of a happy medium, but, um, but I just think. I'm trying to remember the last special election that we had.
It's been a few years, yeah.
Um, so, and there have been, you know, there's been a change in the population. So I, I just think, I just would encourage. The select board and chat, you know, to, to really make a, a robust communications. And reminding people again and again. Um, about, about the timing and locations.
Yeah, and one of the other things that we've been talking about is making sure we talk to all the different committees and groups that we might try to attend in September. To also give this information so everybody is fully informed. So. We are gonna try and reach out.
I have a question too, in line with what Tom is saying. Since the second water, and this is not a criticism, but. Since the second water bill has not gone out yet. Um. Is there any hope that that bill will be sent out to the users before September twenty-fourth? And if so. Is it possible to put a note in with that water bill saying? Very important, they go up and vote yes to this article?
Well, we, we can't say vote yes. We can say vote.
You will vote.
That would be. Or we will.
Remind at least the users.
Yep.
Get out.
Anybody else?
One more thing.
Yep.
Key issue we gotta tell everybody in the town, no matter whether it's village or town. This is a huge problem. You don't have much of a community left. You kill off the village and you don't have a village if you don't have water. Simple as that. You know, so you got three million dollars in costs. You know, you can't afford it as you rate payers now. At three million dollars. This is probably one of the only times you're ever gonna get somebody willing to give you. Two man out of the three man. To take care of the cost. You've got time to do it now. And you gotta get at least sixty percent people saying yes. So go hog tie about a hundred and fifty townspeople that don't live in the village and town. Do you ever wanna be able to drive through something other than the desert down on the fort? Did you get in here and vote?
Yes, and, and you next. But Brian, I'm just on the budget thing and. At regular, not a rate payer, but. Uh, a taxpayer. I think it's absolutely vital in the communication that we go basic and say, what happens if this passes and what happens if it doesn't pass? So that we can clearly say. I know what happens if I vote no. Because a lot of the terminology and so forth here is gonna be hard for individuals to follow with, with the meandering nuances of. Funding, when it happened and how it happened. That's not perfect. If I vote yes or no to this article, what's gonna be the outcome? And in the communication, if you can clearly say. That means. Two hundred people will have lead or no one will have pressure. Whatever that term, it's gonna be vital, I think, to get down to the nitty gritty and not. You can read all the details you want, right up front. Bottom line, upfront, yes or no, what happens? Like a vote charter.
Karen's next.
Thank you. Doesn't, doesn't the school, um, the town water?
Yes, yes.
So, right there. Our school needs water, hello. Pretty simple.
Fact of the matter is. Whether we get the grant or not, the lead remediation is gonna have to be done. Whether you do it with grant money, pay in a large share, or you do it out of your wallet. Number one. Number two, we've got economic. Committee that's trying to bring some of these light businesses to town. If you show you just improved your water quality, that makes it a lot more, uh. Lot more appreciative.
They've dealt with the race fairly well.
Yeah, well, we have, we have to make an improvement before we can ask people to hook up.
Yep.
So. Say, biggest thing is lead remediation. Some of this was overlooked in the eighties when this was, um, originally done. I don't know why. It's not the only town that went through that. Enfield had the same issue, original water lines. We were still finding lead incorporations. But. Being that we know where these exist. It's either we use. Grant money. Or we pay it all ourselves because if the feds will tell you, it's going.
Who else? All right, there be no further discussion. Then we will place the warrant, uh. The article on the war, the single warrant as written. And, um, we'll go ahead and adjourn and we'll reconvene. On, um, September twenty-fourth at one P M in this space. That's it. We're dismissed. Thanks, everybody.